Oh, it is past time. Good morning. It's a pleasure to call this special call meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman and City of Natchez to order. If you would please let us join together in a moment of prayer to be followed by our pledge. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity we had yesterday to thank our veterans and today our prayers for our country, that you would continue to bless America and to continue to be with us in everything that we do. Father, continue to bless this city. And Father, we do have so many who are suffering in our city at the moment. We always thank you for the blessings, but also we want to thank you for those in our midst who need a special touch and special care. I personally want to lift up the family of LaShonda Dixon Terrell, such a tragedy. And Father, just continue to keep your arms of love and comfort over that family. Father, all others, we lift them up to you. Now, as we come to our meeting, let everything we do say be in keeping with your will. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us now repeat our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivi- liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderwoman Hall here. Alderman Fraser.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith here. Alderwoman Irving.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Alder President and County.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to city business. And we have on our agenda, I'm sorry, I've passed over approval amendments. Do we have any?
We do not have any amendments.
Okay, thank you. We have under city business, appeal of the planning commissions, approval of application PC two five dash one six. David and Melissa Williamson, the petite retreat, thirty seven Homestead Street, map forty one dash one one four C one oh seven. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mayor, I want to make the motion to go along with the planning commission decision.
Okay. All right. A motion has been made by Alderman Davis.
Second.
It is seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Do we have any discussion? Yes. Alderman Maroney?
I'm just going to explain my dissent. That permit was granted after our short-term rental ordinance was passed. That should never have been granted. It's an R two district. Should not have been granted based on that, if nothing else. It's also too close to other venues. And I know it kind of points to us making the mistakes, but we made the mistake. We need to own it. I just don't think it ever should have been permitted. I think we need to own up to that mistake.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Maroney. Alderwoman Hall?
Chapter fourteen of this Natchez Development Code permits this very request made by the Williamses and legally can be done. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Irving?
And I just want to piggyback on what she said, but I also wanted to say that in all actuality, it was not their fault that paperwork was misplaced. And so with that being said, they should have been granted permission to open their bed and breakfast without any further ado, without any further ado.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Alderman Fraser?
I just, the person that appealed it, have they been informed that we're going to vote on this today?
They were. They were here just our last meeting.
I'm talking about, yeah, but we are, I think, yes, come please.
Mr. Tingle, good morning.
Alderman Fraser, yes, sir. I contacted Ms., just went blank on the name.
Wild.
Yes, Ms. Jackie Wild, and let her know that we were voting on, or that y'all were voting on this today, possibly. So she knows that the meeting is being held.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We're going to vote on this in a few minutes. You might be a few chose there. You can't vote.
I'm, Mr. Attorney.
Ma'am?
She says I can't vote. I don't know.
She's on Airbnb. Do you think it's, she can't you vote? I'm just, I'm just. I know, but.
This isn't her fault.
The whole thing about it, the whole thing about it, we don't want somebody to come back and say, well, Alderwoman Carter, she on Airbnb, she voted against me, I voted with me, whatever. But I just want to do this properly. I don't want, I don't want nobody in the public to come out and say, well, he's sitting up there on the board and she on Airbnb, the mayor on Airbnb, the mayor's wife on Airbnb. We don't need that.
Right.
So she could sit here, but she can't vote. I don't have a problem.
No, she can't. She shouldn't vote. It really would be a conflict of interest. However, she can do the present stuff.
Alderwoman Smith?
I'm just, I mean, whatever I'm told to do, I'll do it. But what I want to know is how would that be a conflict if I don't, this, we're voting on an appeal to the planning commission about, it has nothing to do with owning an Airbnb.
But it's a change.
But I mean, I, if there's an opinion, if we want to stop the meeting for a minute, he can look out and say there's an opinion.
I don't think it's necessary. In my opinion, there is no conflict, simply because an older person may or may not own the same type of business does not constitute a conflict on a proven or disapproved action of the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I would say if we open that, then how do we go forward? We, everyone here could be, have a perceived conflict if you really start splitting hairs.
I wouldn't say.
We're not splitting hairs.
Mr. Attorney, the attorney has made, made his ruling. Yes, Alderman Fraser.
I don't care what you say, but I'm saying like, I'm not being argument about it. I just want to make sure that we're in the parameters of law. You can say that we splitting hair, but sometime down the line, it's going to come to that point. If I brought my wife up and she brought some property, you'll say, Alderman Fraser, you got to go because your wife owns certain piece of property. But let's, whether the way you want to do it, but like say, Mr. Attorney, it just was a.
I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer so that there is nothing that can be said. I'm going to volunteer to step out of the room.
Well, you're not voting.
And I'm not voting.
But I almost said that.
But I'm presiding. I'm presiding, and I don't care to be in the position of presiding.
Absolutely.
I'm going to actually ask Alderman Fraser. And we're going to step out. Come get us when we're done. I don't believe this is necessary, but I don't want anyone to ever say that we did anything.
I'm saying, we got, we got people in here that's being live screen.
So we'll be, we'll wait and.
Let the record show that Alderwoman Sarah Carter Smith and the mayor stepped out without voting. Now, we, we have a motion on the floor. Can I get a?
This motion is seconded. It just needs to be voted on.
Okay, can I, well, let's, can I vote on this matter? I need a vote. Alderwoman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney recludes herself. I vote aye. I mean, yes, I'm sorry.
I don't even have to vote.
Right, because you're.
Okay, so the motion was passed.
Yes.
The owner of the business can now operate within the parameters of the law. And as I stated earlier, we did this procedure so there wouldn't be any conflict or anything. Would you please ask the mayor to step back here?
I think the chief.
Motion carries. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to hand this to you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of heavy. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, Alderwoman. Yes.
City Attorney, just go ahead for future reference, because we have a lot of Airbnb things that come up. If it has anything to do with Airbnb, that I can't find one on the AG, but would you just check if there's an AG appointment on it, please?
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I say, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be.
We understand, Alderman Fraser, we do. And, and certainly don't want anyone to assume that we're doing anything.
And as you know, and as you know, Ms. Mayor, I'm just going to be perguned. And you know, Ms. Ann McCarthy is sure is listening. She should be writing a letter to.
Well, I do know this. I think, I think you definitely have everyone's best interest in, at heart, and I do commend you for that. Thank you so much. And it will be good, as Alderwoman Smith has said, to get a clarification on this going forward. Being that we didn't have a clarification at the moment, I'm just fine with what we just did. All right. We will now move to Department Director of Reports. Mr. James Johnston is attending a meeting on disaster assistance and cannot be here in person today. And so our city clerk is presenting his report on his behalf. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. So the first item that Mr. Johnston had.
Can you go to the mic, speaking your mic, please, so that way?
The first item on Mr. Johnston's report was the cleaning of illegal dump sites. This is assistance grant through the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Staff is reminding the board that the city has funds to clean identified illegal dump sites, noting that prior to the cleaning of any identified illegal dump sites, an assessment agreement will need to be signed by the property owner and quote bids requested and received. Then he has got the selection of qualified engineering professional for the 2025 EPA Brownsfield Community Wide Assessment Grant. The City of Natchez received proposals by ten AM on Tuesday, October twenty first, 2025, and were accepted by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen at the meeting held on Tuesday, October twenty eighth, 2025. The three proposals received were from Allen Engineering Pickering Firm and PPM Consultants. A review committee consisting of Alderman Curtis Maroney, City Clerk Megan McKenzie, Richard Burke, and James Johnston received, reviewed, and evaluated each of the three proposals and scored each based on the established evaluation criteria. In receiving back the evaluation criteria worksheets, the evaluation committee scored the proposals received as follows. And the cumulative score was Pickering was a two ninety-three, Allen Engineering a three forty, and PPM Consultants a three seventy-nine. It's the recommendation of the evaluation committee to select PPM consultants with a cumulative score of three hundred and seventy-nine as the qualified engineering professional for the city's 2025 EPA Brownsfield Community Wide Assessment Grant. Staff is requesting a motion to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and select PPM consultants.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderman Davis will have discussion? Yes, Alderwoman.
And this is just a question. Just looking at the score, you know, the state says that we always select the lowest and best bid. So is this, is this referred to as the same way? And I'm just asking.
This is.
This was based on qualifications. So the higher the score, the better qualified the committee felt that they were.
Okay. Thank you for clarity.
Higher score in this case. It's not a dollar amount. It's a score. Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Yes, Alderman Maroney?
Just as a member of that committee, we didn't talk among ourselves about the evaluation. At least I didn't talk with anybody. I just went through all of the proposals from the three. And my, my top score also was PPM consultant. So I do agree with, with what they've come up with on the totals. Allen Engineering was, was very qualified. I didn't feel like Pickering had quite the people and the availability that the others did. Theirs was more like environmental stuff and not as much with buildings and that sort of thing. So, but PPM did have a little edge in my mind. Plus, we have worked with them a lot. Although, we've also worked with Allen. But anyway, I feel real good about, about this selection.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Maroney, for your help on that. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have, motion carries. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, oh, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for presenting. Our next item on the agenda is Mr. Ryan Porter, our Parks and Recreation Director. Mr. Porter?
Good morning, Mayor and Board of Aldermen.
Good morning.
Staff is requesting permission to receive quote bids in partnership with the Natchez Adams County Community Alliance for the Duncan Park Dog Park Project. Originally, since it's going to be 100% private funded, we weren't aware that we needed to follow state procurement laws. We're still not 100% certain, but we chose to do so just in case. So this is just basically asking permission to receive quote bids.
So moved.
Okay. Motion has been made by Alderman Maroney and seconded by Alderwoman Smith?
I own a dog.
Do own a dog. We can ask for an opinion on that, but for now, I think we'll.
Well, she better recuse.
The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Any who wish to abstain, a bark. Motion carries.
Also, I want to take this opportunity to give you a little update of what's been going, what's in the future coming up with Parks and Recreation. We had trunk or treat with the Grinch last weekend, or two weekends ago on the bluff. And when I say that this program is growing year after year, I would estimate 2,500 people through that block of Broadway.
It was crazy.
The next, we'll just blow through these really quickly.
If I could make a point for our minutes, I was going to give this report during my miscellaneous updates. Being that this is a special call meeting, we have to stick very closely to the agenda. So understand that Mr. Porter is providing a report from miscellaneous updates that I will not now have to provide.
Okay, we'll just flash through these really quick. I won't even.
And thank you.
We'll just flow through them.
A great.
Thank you.
A great update. So many good things.
Great update. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm very grateful to Dell Robinson, our community liaison, Mayor's Youth Council, and all other community partners who have been working so hard to make all of this happen. But, Mr. Porter, really, what you have done, your leadership and your departmental ownership. Thank you. We now will move to city official reports. Alderwoman Hall?
I'd like to offer my condolences to Deputy Clerk Pam Patterson and her children on the death of her mother-in-law and their grandmother. Just within a matter of months, Pam has lost her husband and her mother-in-law. So we do our condolences to them. I was the speaker for the Mayor's Youth Council Retreat recently. I gave a welcome for the senior citizens breast cancer awareness event and walk. And I participated in the walk with the seniors for that very special event. I attended the ceremony for placing the historical marker for Prince Ibrahimah, sorry, on Highway sixty-one South near Jefferson College. I want to offer many thanks to Dr. Roscoe Barnes, to the Natchez Historical Society, to the Mississippi Historical Society, to Archives in History, and to visit Natchez for all their contributions to this historical marker. And it was also very special because they were descendants not only of Prince Ibrahimah present, but also Mr. Foster and for, for Dr. Cox. Dr. Cox's great-great-granddaughter drove all the way from Wisconsin for this special event. I was a judge for the Global Impact Schools Thrive at Five Leadership Event for their students. They're doing some amazing things for those students at that school. So once they are headed for middle school, they will be top-notch students from global prep. I also participated in the Sotheby West Elementary Schools Halloween Parade and read to the first grade class. I attended Natchez High's Veterans Day Program. Veterans of every discipline were honored at that event. They had veterans present. I had, three of my nephews were honored, and I, one of my nephews, Major Brian Hughes, was the speaker. It was an outstanding event. Junior ROTC students did a flag folding ceremony. And as they were folding the flag, every thirteen folds were described. There was a meeting between all thirteen folds, and that was discussed at that particular program. And I was also a bus guide because Angels on the Bluff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. Thank you for that great report. Alderman Fraser?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mine's going to be real short. I attended a veteran ceremony this Sunday at Zion Hill Baptist Church, pastor by Reverend Joe Pickett. The members of that church put on an excellent program. It was very, very outstanding for all veterans who attended there. They passed out gifts and everything. And we had, we had a lit play skit that they did in church. Also, I just want to simply say, there's no, I want to say there's no disrespect to other service members that fought in war. I want to say to the 58,000 souls that lost their, that lost their life in Vietnam. I am a Vietnam veteran. So I want to praise them. And like I say, I'm not disrespecting other branches of service, but we lost 58,000. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for your service, Alderman Fraser.
Thank you.
And, and your service continues to the city today, and we appreciate you. Alderwoman Smith, your report?
Thank you. Now, I've been sick for the last nine days, so I'm back to the land of the living and happy to be here. But I do appreciate the veterans and their service. And my father-in-law was a veteran in World War II, and my dad, veteran of the Navy, and my stepfather, veteran of the Army. So very, very grateful for their service.
Wow. Thank you so much, Alderwoman. And we appreciate their service. Alderwoman Irving?
Okay. I want to begin with offering my condolences as well to our Deputy Clerk, Ms. Pam Patterson and her family for the loss of their.
for the loss of their loved one. My first hearing of it, but truly my condolences go out to her and her family. Um, I also want to thank the veterans, thank you for your service, and I have to, in my very presence, to the right of me, Alderman Frazier and Alderman Davis, thank you for serving. I also want to bring to the Mayor and Board's attention, um, I think it's worthy to recognize, um, we have several employees that have been with Wal-Mart Corporation for over forty years, from the very first day that they turned the key to open the door of the store, and they're still there. And so, Mr. Mayor, um, I will get with you, I do have the names of some of them. So that, that's something worthy to recognize, they're still standing with the fortitude as if it was day one, forty years later. And so they've made great strive, they've moved up through the ranks to management as well, so that is something to celebrate.
Would you work with Belle Robinson?
Yes.
Our community liaison.
I sure will, let me write her name down.
So glad you brought that forward.
Yes, and I also want to share that I had attended Angels on the Bluff, it was an amazing night, that evening was, the presenters were fantastic, I mean, they kept you in awe, they were very informative, the delay, the delivery of the information from Mr. Rusty Jenkins to Mrs. Marcia.
Colston.
Colston, um, to Mrs. Christian Hogan, Mr. Jamal McCullen, and I, and the Natchez High Ensemble Band was there, when I tell you, everything was fantastic, and I did not grasp the name of the last presenter, but he shared very good information about the medical and diseases infestation with us. And so, a great night, I really and truly enjoyed, and we had a great crew too, everybody was just saying that we look forward to next year's celebration, it's growing and it's something that just should continue to happen. I also want to share that I had requested and inquired about Mr. Chandler Russ coming to give us an update. He's going to, okay.
May I add to that?
Sure.
Too, I spoke to Amy Gatto, and he's going to make it a quarterly, definitely give us a quarterly report.
Great, great, great.
Each quarter, so.
Okay.
And I believe he will be, we discussed it, he will be at a meeting soon, but it depends on his schedule, um, and we'll, we'll make sure that he's here soon.
And while I am reporting about Walmart, I do want to say, um, at night, when we go there, and I'm hoping that it's been replaced the bulbs, Lane Six, at the front entrance of Walmart and at the back of Walmart, both lights on the parking lot, and I know it's private property, but I do hope that entities, somebody could refer this on, because it's a hazard.
We can report it.
We can report it, okay, so it's Lane Six of Walmart, the front light and the back light, Lane Six. Um, we want everyone to feel safe coming in and going out and during the nighttime that they may have to visit Walmart. And that ends my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman, uh, great report.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
Also, I want to happy belated Veterans Day, veterans all over the world may contact me, people I know for thirty-plus years, contact me. It always happened, though, but we're just like a band of brothers and stuff, as far as veterans and stuff. But, uh, I couldn't make it, uh, Angels on the Bluff, uh, because I was out of town at a wedding, had to go. The people I went to, I've been knowing them a long time, their parents got married, they were about seventy-nine years old, which they got married last weekend, that's the reason why I couldn't make it, though. And, uh, as far as the trunk, the trunk or treat, when I came back, they, uh, I drove down, well, that's the boy, I went downtown, and downtown was packed with people everywhere, and then, uh, a lot of people talking to me about the trunk or treat, how great it was, they couldn't wait till next year, and that ends my report.
Thank you, thank you so much, Alderman, uh, and thank you for your service. Veterans Day is a special day to say thanks. Alderman Maroni?
I've got a few things, um, you know, I'm always talking about events, I've always been involved with a lot of events here in town, I want to congratulate some folks for putting on some events, of course, Live at Five wrapped up this past weekend. And that has become such a, such a wonderful experience for folks to come down, to enjoy the bluff. I think a lot of times people are here from out of town for one thing or another, and they kind of stumble upon this, this free party, that on bluff, the bandstand with live music, and it's always such a nice place to go and enjoy some music and see people, and see people out enjoying themselves, and it's free. Living in a small town, a lot of people complain that there's nothing to do. And yet, there's so much to do. If people are just wanting to get out, the trunk or treat was on one of those Fridays, it was bedlam down there, there were people all over the place. This past weekend, the Rotary Chili Cook-Off, Angels on the Bluff, which I also went, was fantastic, there were people all over town, we've seen buses from cruise ships. There's lots of stuff happening, people just need to get out and experience it. Went by the Convention Center earlier today, if anybody hadn't been to the Convention Center recently, they're, they're still working on it, they're repainting some of the main hall because of some inadequacies in the, in the first go-through, um, but it, it's really looking nice, all upstairs, they're working on the roof currently. I look forward to us being able to get to the roof on the Civic Center soon, so, uh, public property's in good shape, I think the auditorium roofing project is about done, if not already finished, so, uh, making good, good progress on our public properties. On a more somber note, you know, we very often recognize and remember folks that have passed away in our communities, we have done just recently, just in the last few minutes, and, and there's another one, a very tragic occurrence. One of the managers had it Route sixty-one, and everyone here, everyone in this room has gone out and eaten at Route sixty-one over the years. One of their managers, Ryan Kaiser, real good fellow, I do a lot of computer work for, for those folks, both at Route sixty-one and County Farm. Ryan Kaiser, I believe it was Saturday night, I think he was at a stoplight in front of maybe Merritt Health, and somebody just plowed into him. And they airlifted him to Jackson and operated, he was in critical condition for several days, and he passed away, I believe, last night or early, sorry.
Sorry to hear that.
And, Ryan, for anybody who was familiar with, with Route sixty-one, if you ain't out there, you probably knew Ryan. And real nice fellow, and the Route sixty-one family is crushed, obviously. But, so I want to remember Ryan and his family, but I also want to bring attention to the fact that this was a senseless tragedy. Somebody, and that person's life is going to be changed forever. Probably texting or fooling with their phone, because it just plowed right in the back of him, sitting there on a motorcycle.
Oh, my God.
And that sort of thing should not happen. So I want all of us to remind people, and I don't know how many people are watching this meeting today, but if you are, when you're driving, put this thing down. Put it down. If you've got a newer vehicle that has Bluetooth capability, if you don't have your phone tied into your car, get somebody to help you do that. So that if you've got to make a phone call, you can do it hands-free and not have to look at or hold your phone. Please, folks, pay attention while you're driving. There's no sense in this type of thing happening.
They just run red lights and stop signs here continuously.
Please, pay attention to traffic laws, red light, stop. Stop signs means stop. I see far too often people running red lights, and very often at major high-speed intersections. The end of Homochita Street at John R. Junkin Drive, oh my gosh, it's crazy, so pay attention. Pay attention, please follow our traffic laws, it's, driving our vehicles is the single most dangerous thing we do every day. More people die in traffic accidents than plane crashes or anything else all put together, pay attention.
Thank you, Alderman Maroni, and we definitely do share, share our condolences to Ryan's friends and family and his work family at Route sixty-one, he will be greatly missed, thank you. Alderman, Alderwoman Irving?
Thank you, I just wanted to revert back a little bit, because I do want to, because it was, it was so enlightening to me. Uh, in the Lindbergh area, this is Halloween night, I had been invited out, I had gone to a meeting and left a meeting and went to, to Trick or Treat in that community, I did not realize, it looked like a little parade within itself. I've never seen, that community was so well-lit, I mean, everybody was out, Lindbergh, Margaret Avenue, over there in that area. Mr. Mayor, I was in awe up until about eight-thirty, um, the camaraderie that you saw, when I said everyone was out, from our Utah senior members of that community dressed, it was just like, oh my God. Yeah, it was like Mardi Gras, exactly, and then to know that there were members of the community taking pictures and photos in yards because they enjoyed the scenery for the Halloween, it was a great visual, but a lot of camaraderie, and I'm like, you're right, this is Mardi Gras within your own neighborhood, you didn't have to leave. To see that happening, that, you know, that tells us that we, people can all come together and have a great time together, and that's what we want to do. And the other thing I want to say too, Mr. Mayor, I failed to real, uh, recognize, I had attended Robin Harris. He had been inducted to the, um, Colleen Hall of Fame, um, the week of October twenty-fifth. He celebrated October twenty-fifth, and it was, uh, and I just wanted to say these things, I've known Robin Harris for a long period of time, um, since we were children, and Robin has been a person that I know was dedicated to ma, in making things happen in our community in a positive way. He was also a person who loved sports, and basketball was his passion. And so, um, I've watched him over the years, um, how he would, in the neighborhood where we grew up. Now, he loved basketball, now he's helping other students who have that passion about basketball to bring their talent to fruition as well, to take it to another level, let's leave Natchez High School, go on to college, and who knows from there? But in a positive way, so I just want to give kudos to Mr. Harris. Um, he also received, it was a gift for him and a surprise, his high school jersey was framed and given to him that night, and, um, to hear of the fortitude, um, the commitment and dedication that he had at Colleen. His coaches came to speak on his behalf as well, so it was great camaraderie to do that, and to invite Natchez to his party. So, um, and it was great, it really was great, great event, and thank you for coming back to me, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Frazier?
I just want to, uh, say, say this right quick, uh, I know we sent out our sympathy and everything else, but I was just want, and I was called this week by Lieutenant Baldwin, I mean, it was lieutenant when I was there, there were one of our longtime city-employed police officers, retired Lieutenant Bill James, who was known as Will James, died, and I was, and Bill James was my supervisor when I came a long time ago, he's thirty, I know at least thirty-some years, and I just wanted to say, it was a shock to me when, when he called me, but I want to send my sympathy out and goes out to him, like you said, he was a long-time police officer.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Smith?
Just want to quickly add that, he's coached for years, he coached my son at Trinity, I know he's coached at AC for years too, so he's, he's had an impact on a lot of kids in the community. And just real quick, I don't want to leave anybody out, Rotary had the Chili Cook-Off, I want to mention that, that went really well Saturday, I, I'm the committee to organize it, but I didn't get to go. Um, and then the Chamber had a progressive brunch, and they had eighty, I think around eighty people, which was full, and they were all out of town, people that came in for Angels on the Bluff. So I gave them something else to do that day, so kudos to the Chamber for that, great event.
So many, so many good things, and, uh, and speaking of the Chamber, I was going to mention this in my updates, but I'll mention it now, we do have the Chamber Awards Banquet tomorrow night, Thursday, six P.M., it'll be held at the Convention Center, and it is an annual event we always look forward to, a lot of food, fellowship, and the awards. I'm sorry, is it the Civic Center?
Yes.
I had the wrong location, Civic Center, thank you. And there is a theme? And it's an eighties theme.
You can dress or not, but there'll be a lot of people dressed for fun.
All right, well, being a child of the eighties, I usually already kind of look like I'm from the eighties, so I'll be ready for that, girl. All right, any, anything else? Uh, good reports and, and sympathies to those mentioned and their families, thank you. We will now recognize our clerk, Madam Clerk, the seat clerk's report, you're recognized.
Thank you, uh, first item is a request for approval of the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five claims docket.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Irving, discussion?
I do, I have some things.
Yes, Alderwoman?
Um, I wanted to begin with, um, page, page six, I mean, page eight.
Yes.
And I'm just inquiring, is this dues for the entire board, the municipal league? So I know this is for the mid-winter conference, I'm assuming, is that for all the, all the persons?
Uh, that is dues for the current year, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year, those are our membership dues. For the, yeah.
Okay, all right, and since I mentioned it, how far in advance do we need to, do we need to go through this process that I see here for your travel request? Is this what we need to do in advance for the mid-winter conference?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I need to add a day or two earlier, um, for it, I think it's a day earlier, and I have that date, and I'll get with you.
Yeah, you'll just complete that form to, to then be approved.
Okay, um, but this is a form. I need a copy of the form.
I can email you the form.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, I'll talk to you about that one, I do want to get to page twenty-nine, twenty-nine. I see, when I look to see, this entire account here is contingency, but I thought contingency was for emergencies. And so when I look to see our Bruce Video Productions, that should come from promote, and I can't, I'm just saying, I see so many things, and as we speak to our auditors, they're saying that these things should be in place for the proper.
So the contingencies are anything that don't have a specific line item within the budget. Those are just kind of miscellaneous things that, that don't have a specific designated line item when the budget is approved.
Okay, well, I, when I looked up, and I'm not being anything, I just want to say this, when I looked up contingency and it said for government, it's unexpected expenses for emergency services as financial safety net, that's what they're for, not for things that are reoccurring, when we look at FSA Enterprise Security Titan, that should be in a separate account somewhere, but not with, out of our contingency fund, when I see an employee, I'm going to call the name, that's reoccurring, he, his salary, his payment should come out of there. When I see Bruce Video, that's, that should come from promotion, because that's what he does for the city of Natchez, and the other, other business there, all of that shouldn't be out of contingency, according to what contingency is. And I'm not trying to embarrass anybody, I'm just saying, these are the things that need to go in the proper place.
No embarrassment, this is just historically where these items have been paid, so.
I just want to say.
We will create separate line items, if that's what you want us to do.
Yes, ma'am, I do. And I have one more. And it's going to, then I'll talk to you about it as well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Irving, thank you very much. Any further comments or questions, discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you, next item?
Hey, next item is a request for approval of the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five mini claims docket.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderwoman Hall, discussion? We'll call for the questions. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Hey, next item is a request for approval to solicit quotes for a tax anticipation loan not to exceed one million, um, and this was included in the budget.
Okay, I do need to ask, are we meeting a motion on the personnel report? It's on my agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it.
Let's take care of that.
Yeah, sorry about that, so a request for approval of the September twenty twenty-five, and it's actually the October twenty twenty-five, um, personnel report.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second, motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Second. Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Uh, next item is a request for approval to solicit the quotes for the tax anticipation loan.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Um, and I
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
And the federal shutdown has impacted us that much in federal funding. I'm a
We we have a number of um, federal reimbursements that are currently on hold until that is sorted out.
Okay.
So yes, it has.
No problem. Do what new?
Okay, the question? Uh, we will now uh, proceed to a vote. In favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Okay, next item is a request for approval to enroll in positive pay services for um, there were five bank accounts that were listed in the proposal um, that was sent out in your packets. Um, it would be for the general fund, um, sorry, I'm trying to find it in my in my pocket. Okay, general fund, transit, senior center, recreation and workforce development bank account. Um, and it would be a flat rate of two hundred dollars per month plus ten dollars for um, each exception that um, you know, basically stop payment that results um, you know, in in fraud um, protection, you know, kind of double checking of these accounts. So um, as stated in the memorandum that was sent out, we did have three altered checks that um, were deposited at another bank that tried to clear our accounts. We did catch them. Um, put a stop payment on the payments. The city is not out any money. Um, but basically the bank told us that our two options were to close the bank accounts and open new a bank account um, or enroll in positive pay, um, which is just an added layer of fraud security and double checking on these accounts. Um, so they um, I think it was fifty five dollars per month is what the typical charge is. Um, fifty five dollars per month per account for positive pay services. Um, but they did do a bundle package for us at two hundred dollars a month flat rate.
So moved.
Uh, motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? Alderman Frazier?
Uh, on these, this this pay service.
Yes, sir.
Positive pay service. How long are we gonna have to be paying these fees?
Uh, that would be from here on out to have positive pay on these accounts.
Okay, uh, so you're saying that that was some almost attempted fraud on these accounts?
That's correct.
Okay, have have these have they doing any investigation? Have anybody doing investigation on?
So it was actually the bank where these individuals deposited the checks um, contacted us and said, look, we have, you know, these checks have been deposited. They are going to be coming through, but they appear to have possibly been altered. Um, so we looked in and yes, they had absolutely been altered. Um, and so we were able to to stop that, you know, do a stop payment. So they did not clear our accounts.
Oh, okay.
But
Okay, okay. I I hear you. But what I'm saying is that if this is an attempted fraud, it looked like someone should be investigating this or either uh, if it's on the city, look like I I would say the police department, somebody should be doing some kind of investigation. Now, I see my colleague go, he's got hands, or maybe she gonna give me a little more insight. But I I was just, I'm just saying that if we get get more than one fraudulent attempt on the city bank account, there's no telling how much money that we'd have missed. Somebody's probably, it's possible that we'd have missed a whole lot. There's no investigation being done. It looks like the city shouldn't go and get investigated. Now, I could be wrong, but I did this a long time. Look like some kind of investigation should be done on some end, on the city end or whereabouts because attempt on it, we can't afford to give nobody no money on the fraudulent account. So that's just my question and that's just my concern. You you know?
Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm I'm, this is very expensive for this. I'm just being in banking. I'm just, could we, I would ask that I'd like to suggest we take it under advisement. Would anybody would like to um?
I had a comment I wanted to make as well.
If anybody else thinks we should look into this a little more?
I do. I do.
So would would the person that made the motion, I'm not sure who it was, would y'all take it under advisement? Edit, I mean revise it to be under advisement?
Or you can make
I seconded the motion. I believe I seconded. So because
Yes, Alderwoman Irving, you're recognized.
I did, and I just went and did a little more research on it and this is what I do want to read. It say may um, why, what is the downside to positive pay? There may also be a review deadline. It's one of the biggest problems with positive pay. If you do not let the bank know the same day, they may return the flag item and they may try to process. If the check is valid and you missed the deadline to report it, you could run into some cash flow problems or slow down. Um, cash flow problems or supply slowdown. So that's what I want to share with the board. And so I do um, thank you, Alderwoman Smith, for bringing that um, to our attention. That we take it under advisement now.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Hall, I think you made the motion. Are you?
I I just altered it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, to take this under advisement?
I said that.
Okay, I'm just confirming that. Um, Alderman Davis, um, if if we actually are taking this under advisement?
I think
I don't know that a vote is needed. Uh, Madam Clerk, I'm record.
Yeah, so to to answer Alderman Frazier's question, I did ask when this all came about, what is our next step? Do we need to file a report with the police department? What what do we do on the potential fraud? And what the bank said is that it would be up to the other bank to pursue tracking these individuals down. Um, basically, what we have on the the altered checks may or may not be a true identity or a a real person to be able to pursue pressing charges for potential fraud. And that because we've got it, you know, we stopped it, that the city is not out any money and that there's not really any grounds for us to pursue anything at this time. That came from the bank, but I did ask those questions. Um, and to answer Alderman Irving's questions or concerns about the the deadline. So what we have put in place since this happened is they are emailing us every day, um, they being our local bank um, for every check that is trying to come through on these five accounts. And they usually get that list to us between eight thirty, nine o'clock every day, and we have to respond by eleven o'clock, whether these are valid and can be paid. So that's just kind of a temporary fix that has been put in place to continue to monitor these a little closely until we can come up with a long term fix. Um, but the the long term fix, according to the bank, is either close the accounts and reopen new accounts because they have potentially been compromised or do positive pay. Um, and because of the accounts that we're dealing with and the amount of grant and federal and state monies that come into these accounts, getting all of that switched over with those agencies is going to be a nightmare. So anyway, just to to give you all all the information.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the floor to take this under advisement. Alderman Davis?
Oh, did they try to cash these checks locally or something in another area?
It was out of state.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I will call.
I have fraud on my accounts and my bank always calls me because they they know me. If bank knows us, they know the city. And if they suspect something out of the ordinary, they will alert you. So that that's how they operate.
Uh, motion has been made and properly seconded for this to be taken under advisement. I'd like to call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Next, next item, Madam Clerk?
Hey, next item is um, request for approval of travel for myself and Ms. Tiffany Howard to attend the Mississippi Municipal Clerk's Winter Conference in Flowood from December tenth through the twelfth.
Second. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I I I know training is important and I want that. So that leaves your assistant um, clerk and will you have enough personnel in the office to help with the daily duties of your responsibilities while you are away?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bell and Ms. Patterson will both remain here while Ms. Howard and myself attend this conference.
Okay, I'm just making sure. And then I guess my next question is, go on, no, go on, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Irving. Further discussion?
Call the question.
The questions then called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item? Is that it?
I believe that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that business lacks the renewal of the business license from this being placed upon the minutes.
Second.
Um, I'm I'm sorry. Could you repeat that motion?
That the business license renewal, October twenty twenty five replaced.
Okay, this is a special call meeting. Is that?
Yes.
Yes, but is it on the agenda?
It's on her report.
Uh.
It is, it's on the report.
Okay.
I I was kind of my understanding is that these were automatically going to be made a part of the minutes moving forward. So.
Um, where is it on your report? Uh, I mean, I don't see it on the agenda and I wanted to be very careful.
The these are monthly, yeah, these are monthly reports that I send out.
Yes, yeah, we, it has, could we do that next meeting? It has to specifically be on the agenda in order for us to entertain a motion today. So if you could just bring that motion at our next meeting, I would appreciate it. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do know we have a brief executive session to discuss a potential matter of litigation. Uh, we will come to that shortly. Um, in my report, I want to, first of all, um, just say it's been a great couple of weeks since the announcement that Natchez will be having commercial air service with SkyWest United. In fact, people are already booking flights to all parts of the world from Natchez. I understand uh, one individual just booked their round trip to London, England. And uh, and the rates are very competitive. Uh, in fact, the round trip from Natchez to London, England, I think, started seven hundred and thirty three dollars. And so this is a game changer for Natchez. We are going to see an uptick in business, uh, a lot of tourism, uh, even industrial development. We are excited. Uh, there are major upgrades that are needed at the terminal in order to accommodate this new air service. Uh, we have been working with the county as a team and working all of this through. Uh, the uh, the uh, airport actually uh, has a very large hangar. And just this morning, um, uh, individuals visited the hangar, looked at it and determined that it is going to be a great solution for us that will help to save funds in having to build an addition or a new terminal. However, the funds to take care of this, accommodating all the needs for United, SkyWest, all the needs for TSA, it 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 becomes pricey. Uh, we are waiting on final approval. However, the governor has already given his verbal on seven hundred and eighty seven thousand coming from the state of Mississippi for this project. Also, the county had already received a seven hundred thousand dollar grant uh, from MDOT for and FAA through MDOT for improvements at the airport for term uh, for hangars and 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 whatnot, but they now are going to be submitting for that grant to be revised and increased to a million dollars and allow it to be used on this project. They also have three hundred thousand in FAA funds that they receive annually that they are dedicating to this project. And this with the governor's help should get us to an amount approaching two million, uh, which we think is enough uh, to take care of this. In order though, for these funds to be finally secured, there is a match of one hundred thousand needed. Uh, the county has requested that we consider uh, being a partner with them and making that match. Obviously, they are putting in a lot of money on their end, uh, and so much that has to be done at the airport. So they're asking us for fifty thousand. The city clerk has identified some funds in in our public properties budget that would help us.
Community, uh, not
I'm sorry.
Capital improvement.
Capital, I'm sorry, capital improvements. Now, um, this would have to be done with a uh, with a legal agreement between the city and the county that would be perfected by our attorney and their attorney. And it's not unlike work that we've done in the past to collaborate on improvements at the airport to get us actually to this point in our history, which is a historic announcement. Never before has the city of Natchez had commercial jet service from our airport anywhere in the world. So I am asking for a motion to support the grants for the grant for terminal upgrades uh, for commercial air service and to show our support by partnering with fifty thousand from the city to go toward the total of one hundred thousand in match funds. And I need a motion uh, for that and and for the attorney to follow up with the county attorney and getting all of that done. I have a motion by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderman Davis. Uh, thank you. We have now discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm not doubting you whatsoever, but why is it that those and those members of that board don't come and make a request like we do? You go and you do the presentation asking, why is it that they don't come and you're always bringing this to us? I mean, never would we have a problem with partnering with anyone and I hope safely we've secured the fifty thousand from the capital improvements. I hope that can, you know, you say it's there, it's not that it's there, but are we look, and this is planning for the future. I do understand that. I don't have a problem, not in opposition of it, none whatsoever. So I'm gonna stick to the topic. I just think that they need to come and bring this to the board and you bringing it to us.
In the future, I'll be happy to make that request. And and I'm hopeful that they won't be bringing anything uh, further.
I mean, but when they do have an issue that they come to us.
Ald Ald Alderwoman Hall, you're recognized.
We're not a bank. Please let them know that. They keep coming to us for money and they have not given us a penny.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and Alderwoman Irving, I will make that request of the county administrator that in the future they will come to our meetings.
Thank you.
So much. Further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Alderman Frazier?
I too am like, uh, Alderwoman Irving stuff. We uh, I'm not against the airline coming here or anything like that. And they, as I explained early in the year about money, the money is coming out of the capital improvement. Uh, we have a lot that's coming on our plate this year and we need to manage our money as wisely as possible. And for this money, capital improvement and stuff, I say I'm not against it, but I think for fifty thousand dollars, we should put our money somewhere else. Uh, now, I might say this might be a little forfeit. I've been kicking, they want to do, if the county want to do something uh, besides the airport, they need to see about building a a new complex, jail complex. That that's what I want to do. But like I say, this money, uh, I'm kind of like a little on the Larry side about spending taxpayer money. No, but like I say, but whatever the board decide, but I feel that fifty thousand dollars is like, as the Alderman say, we should have someone from them face to face talking. But your brain is fine, but I need to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Yes.
Yeah, sitting there, I need the Alderman sitting there or someone or not. And I stated this early in the year when when someone, when Brad Raffa came over here about the sirens, I told him, I say, we don't need you, five of you to come, but I need to see a Alderman here. I told him, I say, we don't need you, five of you to come, but I need to see an Alderman here.
A supervisor.
I mean, a supervisor, I'm sorry. And I don't see a supervisor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think you make a good point. Thank you, Alderman Fraser, and we will certainly convey that.
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited about that because oldest sibling, who's now deceased, he would share with me when I was a teenager that he would actually catch the plane to Natchez. He was military, and he would actually catch the plane to Natchez. So to see that we're at this point where we're getting it up and operational again, that makes a big difference. That shows growth. That shows growth, and that's what we're doing. So we're moving forward in our city and the business of the city as well.
Thank you, Alderman Irving. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item of business, it, you know, it is very sad that we lost Attorney Eileen Marr in our community a short time ago, and her service was so profound to our community in addition to serving on the Natchez Housing Authority Board. And so we have received a letter, and it is a letter from the Natchez Housing Authority requesting the consideration of the reappointment of Attorney Lucian Sam Gwynn, Commissioner and the Chairman of the National, Natchez Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, and to appoint Attorney Lisa Jenkins Chandler as a new board member to replace former Commissioner Attorney Eileen Marr. Okay. Yes, thank you. Let the minute show that due to a family, a family relationship, Alderman Smith has refused herself from the meeting.
So moved.
And so a motion has been made by Alderman Davis and seconded by okay, Alderman Irving has made the motion, and Alderman Davis has seconded the motion. And is there any discussion?
I was just going to ask that it needs to be two separate motions, since he is the chairperson of the Natchez Housing Authority, and she's coming on as a okay, all right. I mean, it doesn't matter. I'm just was asking.
I think, being that it is all one request, we can
Okay.
Okay, this one.
All right. I have no problem.
Good point, though. Mr. Attorney, do you see that that's all right?
I concur.
Okay, all right. In that case, then I'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. If y'all could ask Alderman Smith to please return to the meeting. I also want to make an announcement. I was asked to make this announcement today. I've been invited, Alderman Smith, thank you. I have been invited and asked to extend invitation to Board of Alderman to a press conference that will be held Monday, November 17th at 11:00 a.m. at the Adams County Community Safer for the good news that the Central Mississippi Boys and Girls Club from Jackson is moving forward with the Natchez Adams County School District on a pilot program for Natchez. And so if you are able to attend, I for one have been a longtime supporter of Boys and Girls Clubs. And I'm excited to see this happening, and I do expect to be there next Monday.
What time again, Mr. Mayor?
It'll be at 11:00 a.m. at the Adams County Community Safer.
This is Monday. I can attend.
Also, I put this on here because I wanted to be sure all of you were invited and understood the significance of this. Our partner Sparklight provides such great services in our community for internet and also for television services. They are going to be making a very significant announcement on the front steps of City Hall on Tuesday, December 16th at 3:00 p.m. We would like to encourage the Alderman to come and any others. This is a game changer for Natchez, and the announcement will definitely make headlines across our region because we are going to be celebrating that Natchez will be head and shoulders above other communities throughout our region and most communities in our state when it comes to high-speed internet. And the beautiful thing about this announcement is it's not costing the taxpayers a dime, not here locally and also not on the federal level, because this is all being done to private funds, to Sparklight. So great, great things. Under miscellaneous updates, I just want to give a shout out to all of those in our city who make great things happen. I'm very grateful to our community liaison, Bell Robinson. She's so dedicated, working so hard, along with other city staff, always working with Richard Burke, with Jerry Ford, with also Rhonda Doran in my office, but all other city partners, police chief, fire chief, so many in Parks and Rec. And we have had some amazing events, a lot of events. It's been exhausting, the number of events. I'll agree with you, Alderman Maroney. Anyone that says there's nothing to do in Natchez, they just need to come out from under the rock they're living under because there is so much to do. We had a great balloon festival. We had a great trunk or treat. Yes, we had a great everything leading up to where we are now. My goodness, the great events that Y'all Means All had, celebrating, you know, awareness of mental health and suicide prevention. I wanted to just say, Angels on the Bluff, what a phenomenal event each and every year. And it raises so much in funds for the city cemetery, saving our taxpayers. I believe they raised this year approaching $75,000, and that is truly amazing. And it shows a great commitment throughout this community. We are a generous community. And when I look at, think, consider the Chili Cook-Off raising money for the Mississippi Children's Home. And I haven't heard how much was raised, but I know it's always a lot. Usually around 15, 16,000.
We're a good crowd.
Always a lot. We are also really gearing up now for Christmas in Natchez. We will have the lighting of our tree on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. The following Saturday, our parade. And the European Christmas Village will be up and running again on weekends along with our Natchez trolley. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for all the help there. When I consider all the events for our seniors and through our senior center. And also, I'm going to circle back to Parks and Rec. Our Live at Five series was a great success, but it reached a point when the time change was really, really dark out there. And Dylan Butler, Ryan, you helped, did an amazing job getting lights out there and on the trees and to make sure with Jody Rutter's help that everything was illuminated around our bandstand. And what beautiful evenings were had by so many and a very diverse, diverse crowd. So we're excited about that. So tomorrow night, Chamber of Commerce, another great event. I can't say enough of what the chamber does. Our DNA, a great event. Our Pumpkin Patch Festival that lasted the whole month of October. And then when you look around and you see so many churches and so many private organizations and our schools, both public and private, everyone is pitching in to make Natchez the best it can be. I want to say this is a model community. It is a community that exemplifies camaraderie and partnership and collaboration and people overcoming all of the, all of the historical divisions that were tried, that people had tried to thrust upon us and really working together as one Natchez. I am grateful to live in this beautiful city. My phone was blowing up the last couple of weeks with people bragging on Natchez, people from out of town passing through, making life-changing memories right here in our city. And let's never take for granted the blessing we have of being mayor, board of Alderman of such an historic city. And Mingo Tingle, I've gotten so many compliments on you and the work being done in our city's planning department. And you're just taking things to another level, and we thank you for that. And we're just grateful that you are here, serving our city. I want to say our first responders have had some tough moments lately. And before we, before we end, you know, there's so many other great things to talk about. I do want to make sure everyone knows we're really working hard on our Songwriters Festival. It'll be happening the last weekend of January. Some great national talent, you know, coming. And we also are working very quietly on a very large celebration for Natchez, for our 250th. And there'll be a concert, a very special Live at Five with some major acts. We have already confirmed Dorothy Moore to be here, and we are working on several others. And it's going to be a fantastic celebration. Arden Barnett is working with us. That will be taking place on Fri, on Friday, July 3rd of 2026. Now, I want to just give a word for our first responders and our Public Works crew members. You know, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a horrific historic rain. We had flooding in places in Natchez we've never seen flooding. And it was awful to see families and, and individuals, we all know, affected. But it was also so sad to experience the loss of life for Ms. LaShonda Dixon.
Dixon.
The Terrell family. And I want to, today, when we do adjourn our meeting, as we have done so often, we have adjourned in memory of so many. There are so many who have been named today. And our hearts are heavy for these losses in our community, and I'd like to add to that list, Ms. LaShonda Dixon, if we could just please remember her along with all those others, Mr. Kaiser and others that we have lost in our community. And, and the first responders have been there. They, they have had some horrible situations over the past year, year and a half. And Chief Arrington, I can't see you, and I'm not sure that, I know Commander Best was here. I'm not sure that Police Chief is here. Say also to our Public Works who come out in the worst of conditions to work so hard to keep our city safe. I just want to say a resounding thank you
Yes.
for what you do, and please pass that along to everyone concerned. So we do have an executive session. Yes, Alderman Irving?
And I do apologize to interrupt, but I knew you would do this, just not at the top of your brain. We, our very own previous attorney, Mr. Brian Callaway and Mrs. Mars were recognized from the state of Mississippi. So will you present that information for the bar?
Oh, I tell you, and you know, I actually thought of Brian this weekend. It was just something random. I don't even know what it was, but oh, I was just so sad. And we miss Brian Callaway so much. Thank you, Alderman. Well, with that said, we do have a matter that presents a potential litigation that our city attorney has been dealing with. He wishes to discuss this with us. Excuse me. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed determination for the purposes of having this discussion. Alderman Davis has made the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Alderman Smith. Mr. Attorney, well, first of all, let's go to the question. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Attorney, I understand you have a matter to discuss with us pertaining to potential litigation. Does this meet the definitions in Mississippi law for having a, an executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it does, and in compliance with the directive of the Mississippi Ethics Commission. Let me cite Statute Mississippi Code annotated 25-41-7, sub-paragraph 4B. And I'd like the minutes to reflect that this executive session involves a strategy session or negotiation with respect to prospective litigation or issuance of an appealable order when an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the city. And that is the subject of our executive session, and it's well within that exception.
All right. Thank you so much. Any discussion on the motion? We'll call for the, well, I'm sorry, we've already approved that motion, but any discussion before we now adjourn our closed determination? entertain a motion to adjourn the closed determination? Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Irving. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We now are back in regular session. I'll entertain now a motion to go into executive session for the reasons that have been discussed. Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. Call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We will now go into executive session. Our live feed will end now, but we will make the report when we come back.